And now we want to welcome Bill Clark from the Cooperative Extension Service. If you would like to identify yourself for the record.
Hi, Bill Clark, Cape Cod Cooperative Extension Director. Pleased to be here, thank you.
Thank you. So, we might want to talk about, or you might want to talk about some of your new initiatives, maybe, for starters.
Okay. Just, I guess, a couple things, as directed. The operating budget is pretty much level funded. I have a couple areas of maintenance issues and so forth that I muck a little bit, but generally, pretty much, it's level operation from fiscal ten, again, with a few exceptions. And because of that, I thought, gee, I would prepare new initiatives. Some of them are not new, but other items that would be, should money be available, I'd be interested in having you consider for funding. So, if you'd like, I could start with those. Okay? All right. Item one is, not in any particular order, but the first one on the list is Cape Cod Buy Fresh Buy Local. And in your, on the second hand I gave you today, there's a little, there's a back-to-back sheet, looks like this. As you all know, we just finished our first year, a little more than a year, actually, Buy Fresh Buy Local, Cape Cod. It's an attempt to put together those that are producing crops, farmers, shellfishermen, fishermen, with businesses in the general public, and promote local grown produce and so forth. This year, we had sixty-seven members. We had, that's eighty dollars each to be a member. So, it was pretty, we were really happy with our first year. We have an advisory group that you all have approved, that meets occasionally to oversee the program with me. It was funded this year with a grant from the EDC, and with a grant from the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources in Boston. In communication with Ag Resources in Boston, they do not have a grant program this year, so that's not available. I'm not sure, maybe you could tell me what's happening with the EDC, whether they're going to have a grant program. I hope so.
They are.
Should they have it, I will certainly be applying for continued funding, and we won't know until we know.
Well, the EDC, will that go through the Cape Cod commission?
No, just through the EDC board.
It goes through the EDC.
Through your guys.
The same process we've always had.
Right.
Where the EDC puts out their notice of available grants, which they should be doing any day now, if they haven't already. They have twenty thousand grants, twenty thousand dollar grants. And then the process is the same. You know, you respond with your intent to apply.
Right.
And then, and then, if one asks, then you complete the full application. So, I would suggest that you start looking.
We will. I don't know how they feel generally about funding in subsequent years, but...
I do, I believe what they're doing is, they are putting a specific...
Categories.
To the RFP. So, you should look at it, look at it as a template.
I know one is in the area of marine resources, and I'm not sure what the other two are. So, you need to look at what those categories are before you apply.
If we don't get funding, additional funding, this program ends in June. That's what happens, unfortunately.
So, Buy Fresh Buy Local program?
Yes. The funding ends, the EDC grant we have totally goes through June. And the grant basically is paying for our contractor, Jesse Gunnar, to do all the legwork. We bought, for printing, we bought the bumper stickers and the magnets, and advertising, promotional materials. That's all the money went to running the program. Just to keep it going, and certainly we need more, but I have in here a request of fifteen thousand, which would go all towards contractual services, to continue with Jesse to run this program. Excuse me.
Well, this is certainly one of the most significant...
Oh, yeah.
...you know, economic development activities that we're involved with as far as the county goes, because we're trying to, we're trying to, what was it, re-energize the agricultural activity here in, you know, in Cape. And the other part is that the closer we are to the source of our food, the more the amount of climate change issues we've got certification. All this is good stuff.
The word from all food groups, associations, and so forth, is that buying local is in now. I mean, there's a wave that we're riding with this, and certainly benefiting our farmers and shellfish, aquacultures, and shellfishermen, finfishermen, and so forth. And so, that's paid off to benefiting our restaurants and local businesses. As you can see from the list I gave you on both sides, there are businesses and restaurants and farmers from province down to Galveston Board, so...
Yeah, I don't have that either.
Excuse me?
It's this sheet here. It's this one that looks like this.
People don't get it close.
He just gave them to us. They were attached to this little fold. It's right here.
Right here.
Oh, here. Oh, okay.
It's inside, yes.
Okay, so can I?
So, that's basically what that's about.
Wait, before we get off that subject, go ahead.
I just was wondering, all right, so, so what we did, so what you did was, you decided this initiative, you have a coordinator, this person, and she has gone to the various growers, harvesters, the retail markets, and asked them if they would like to have membership on this, and that way, they would be listed, in a way, it would be like...
Yes. There's a newsletter that goes out electronically to roughly seven hundred and fifty people. You can, if you're interested in being on that list, there's no charge. If you want to find out, if you're a consumer of local products, or you want to be a consumer of local products, you can ask to be on her list. She writes that newsletter up. It goes out regularly, so you'll know what's in season, what markets, where the farmers' markets are, what restaurants are selling local products, what businesses are selling local, and so forth. So, it's, again, tying producers with consumers, whether it be on a family level, or business level, whatever. So, there's a lot of interest in this. I'm honored to continue with it. I've asked for fifteen thousand, and we certainly are going to be looking at fundraisers through our committee. I'll probably be talking to you about those as we, as we, you know, full on multi-payering. So, we'll see what happens.
Well, I was going to suggest that you add this to your budget for now.
It is in there, yep. It's in there.
The fifteen thousand, it's already in there.
I didn't identify it as a new initiative separately, but it is in his...
It's in his...
It's in your... It's in the total, it's in the bottom line.
Because if the EDC's three categories for the small grants doesn't apply to this...
Exactly.
Then we may want to give serious consideration to keeping it in your budget.
I should...
Because it's a really good program.
I should have said, as requested, when I say that, it means everything that they asked for, from soup to nice...
Is in here.
Is in there.
Okay, that's good to know. All right.
Last year, we, between the two grants, we had, off the top of my head, it was in the forties, forty thousand plus range. So, fifteen thousand would just be beer bones to keep her on, hopefully provide seed money to get other funds. The membership fees would help provide gross money for advertising and for printing. So, that's how it's working.
So, the forty was like twenty and twenty, basically? Twenty for ag and twenty for EDC? Something like that?
I think it was twenty-five from the EDC. I think we had sixteen from the state.
Fifteen and twenty.
Something like that. So, that's the first one. Item two, municipal shellfish propagation. I know you all received a letter from the shellfish, Bonneville County Shellfish Officers Association. They meet with the marine staff regularly. Over the past ten or so more years, we've been receiving an earmark in the state budget for shellfish propagation. We certainly, we serve as a, we receive the money, we go out to bid to purchasing department by Cohog seed, remote set oysters, and sometimes soft shell clams or whatever seed, get a better price for all the towns, and it all goes to municipalities. With the state budget problems, earmarks were eliminated, so this was eliminated. At the same time, as I put in this little paragraph here, commercial shellfish permit sales have gone up thirty-two percent. There were nine hundred and two commercial shellfishermen in two thousand and seven, it was eleven ninety-four in two thousand and nine. From a homeowner, a recreational permit, they've grown twenty-seven percent. It's thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-two in two thousand and seven, seventeen thousand sixty-eight in two thousand and nine. Both indicators of...
Seventeen thousand sixty-eight?
Excuse me?
Seventeen thousand sixty-eight?
Yes. That's on that list I gave you here. Indicating that, you know, a lot of people that do other jobs, when the economy gets tough, they shellfish. As well as families who are, you know, things are getting tough, they're more inclined to go recreational shellfishing to supplement food to the table. So, it couldn't come at a worse time, the state money's been cut out. And we've got ninety thousand for years, and this was what we funded all these programs with. And so, we have nothing right now. Well, this request is for thirty thousand to keep it going, certainly not at the level we had in the past, but it's, we'll keep it going.
What will that do, the thirty thousand? What will that be able to accomplish? What would it go towards?
Cohog seed and remote set oyster primary.
So, it would be for the seed itself?
Yes. Each town puts in an order, and then we see if we can afford what they all want. And sometimes there's some negotiation between towns as to, see, we can't afford to buy that much, and so, whatever.
And they pay you a fee for this?
No. This, actually, this is passed through from the state, to the county, to the towns.
Right, as a grant.
As a, yes. It was an earmark in Division Marine Fisheries' budget for Bonneville County Municipal Shellfish Propagation.
Are you doing scallops?
We did that with the county side of my budget. We did scallops. We had some particularly successful projects in Galveston, Yama, and down Pleasant Bay, trying to increase the scallop population, yes.
How much would it cost them if they had to buy this seed? Say, we have no money either, and they had to go off?
The towns? Well, I guess collectively, over ninety thousand dollars. And what they, when we go to bid, they include what they're, they might have in their budgets with ours. So, this supplements what's in the town budgets. So, this would cost them at least ninety thousand.
What are they doing this year, when there is no money?
Well, that's part of the problem. The towns are not, are being cut, and the state was cut. And at the same time, there's more pressure on the fishery. There's more people, both recreational and commercial people fishing, so there's a real strain on the resources.
Is it possible to charge a small fee for the seed? I mean, it doesn't have to be...
To the towns, you mean?
Yeah. I mean, if they had to go and acquire this on their own, as individuals...
Right.
They would have to purchase it somewhere.
Yep, they do.
So, you could have that cost, and then, you know, of course, we would, I'm sure, be much more reasonable. I mean, is there some, is there...
I guess the way the towns could do that, if they were to, they would increase their fees to their, for their licenses.
Or they would have to put there the budget, and the budget's probably already done this year.
You know, part of this, me and all of this, is that we have a federal requirement for a fishing license, you know, to fish in the ocean, and there's no piece of that that comes back for any kind of aquaculture.
Right. They just started that, that new permit, and I'm not sure where the money's going to go, to tell you the truth.
In your contract with the state, is there any way to determine whether or not part of that fee for that license which is being required? Because the state's doing it for two years, right? And then the federal government picks it up?
Well, I honestly don't know the details.
I think we should ask as to whether or not that could be a vehicle for sustainable funding for this program, if they're not going to give us the money directly to do it, and it's an important contribution to economic development.
Well, I guess, to the credit of the State Division Marine Fisheries, they were seeing the need for this, and the need for propagation, and they were funding it for years, until things got really tough on their end.
Well, the reality now is that we're casting about for, let's say, for pennies, you know, to continue. You noted an increase in the recreational licenses and the, you know, for, other than ocean fishing, for commercial and for recreational. It seems to me that we ought to, in order to piggyback on Schiller's idea, is that perhaps part of that fee should be designated to support this program.
But we could send a letter to Senator Brown, and let her go. This could be his very first initiative for Cape Cod.
Well, I'd be happy to sign that letter.
We have applied for a NOAA grant on behalf of all the towns for propagation, so we are working with the towns in coordinating that effort, so...
On a serious basis. On a serious basis, I think we should, we should send a lot of requesting funding, or requesting at least part of that license.
Yeah, we should think his money through, and find out exactly...
I think bring it to the attention of the towns, because obviously, since they're collecting a fee for this, right?
Give back.
And since ocean, say, ocean resources are not automatically, let's say, restored, that we have a program for, let's say, for, let's say, for developing resources that support both recreational and commercial fishing. If there's, if there's a universal requirement for permitting, normally permitting go, a portion of permitting goes to support the fish, support the administration of the fishery.
We actually, so, put together a proposal, gave it to Congressman Delahunt's office, basically along those lines, asking for funds.
What did we hear?
Haven't heard anything yet.
And this is, this is the dentist site you're talking about?
No, this is above and beyond that.
Right.
That's also been proposed.
Right.
But this is just for propagation funds.
We should just, yeah, let's, what we should do is look at the background. I mean, where is that money? I mean, you know, we don't know what's going on with that money, so we should really just find out the details, and then address it according to that, because we're just sort of assuming that they go someplace else.
I don't know what's going on with earmark, but yeah, that's what we need, we need to find facts about what's happening.
We need to, right.
We ought to ask for it anyway.
To your point about asking the towns for a fee for this, they're the ones that initiated this, and sent you the letter, and I'm sort of carrying the message to you through the budget process, that they have asked for funding through the county for propagation of shellfish, so...
Well, you know, I think the reality of situations now is, you can have grants, and grants are there to help you get established, with the hope that you then find, you know, firm ground, and you no longer need that grant, and I think the time is now, so, I mean, or before. So, I think that we have to look at some interesting ways that we could do it, we can provide this service, and if everyone has to be part of the buy-in process, how can we do that as painlessly?
It's, I guess, in terms of your long-range plan, it meets the economic development initiative, it meets the environmental initiative.
Exactly.
And through other tours that we were on the last couple summers, you saw how we, in addition to providing a fishery and helping the fishery, the oyster banks have been used to help reduce the nitrogen inputs.
Absolutely.
So, there's a lot of benefits to this.
A lot of it.
So, it's...
And it's economic.
That's, I guess, why the constables turn to the county for, as a regional project.
Did all coastal communities get similar shellfish money?
We were the only one in Massachusetts. I think, a couple of the years, the islands got some funds, but primarily in Bonneville County.
So, we do take up two-thirds of the coast?
Yep, okay.
Yeah, but it's always good to have friends in other places if you...
It sure is.
If you can build those coalitions.
Right.
A lot of the waters in other parts of the state are not open, for whatever reason. Like, in Boston, and some of them, no shortage.
Well, the ninety thousand requests is on my list, and it will be given tomorrow. We'll talk a little bit about it, your data about the town's shellfish permit sales.
I know, you didn't ask them what money... Does anybody up there, I mean, you know, they'd have to look into it too, I'm sure, but off the top of their head, do they know what happens to that permit, how that's structured?
Where does the money go?
And maybe we could just ask them to get back to us.
Well, the local money, I think, is clear, because of the local coffers, and, but this new permit, this is a federal permit.
The federal.
Yeah, this is a new federal permit. I thought that was earmarked for federal, is that administration of, how they monitor the fishing?
NOAA?
Yeah, it's not NOAA, but...
It may very well be, but they may not be aware of the, you know, of the contributions that a permit fee could make to local development of aquaculture. And we have history. This isn't something we're suggesting is a new thing. We have history and evidence of, of, they've increased interest in that area, based upon the application from, you know, from people who both want to do it for a living and want to do it for recreation.
Congressman Delahunt has a proposal from us. We asked that they pass it around to different federal agencies to see if there was some interest, and...
When did you give them that proposal?
At least a month, maybe two months ago.
It might be time to just give them a heads-up and find out what's going on.
Okay, great. Item three is regional household hazardous waste collection. Excuse me, as you know, we've been working with all the towns, conducting, coordinating the hazardous waste. It's partially funded by the county, and the majority of it's been funded by the towns. Just as a, that large sheet that you have, the eleven-and-a-half-by-seventeen spreadsheet, lists everything that was collected this summer, or this season, I should say. Just as a recap, we had, we collected two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty pounds. It's over a hundred-and-thirty tons of hazardous waste in nineteen collections. Fourteen towns, nineteen collections. That included fifty-two-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-six gallons of hazardous waste, which is the equivalent of a thousand fifty-five gallon drums. The total cost to the towns was a hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-one-sixty-seven. The county paid a portion of that, we have around thirty-four thousand dollars of our, the county money went into this, to defray the costs of the towns. Four-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-one households participated. Curiously enough, even though we've been doing this for years, forty-three percent of the participants were new. So...
You think they might have...
Of new households already?
New participants.
Okay.
New participants. So, of the forty-five, four-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-one households that participated, forty-three percent of them, almost half, indicated they were new participants in the hazardous waste collection.
And what were your numbers last year?
Similar.
So, it's just a different group? Maybe it's just the transition, the transitory nature of the Cape?
Could be, yep. And then forty-four businesses participated in our collections.
You know, one of the reasons why you might be getting new people rather than returns is that when I, when I turned in all of my mercury thermometers, I didn't really need to go back to turn in any more mercury thermometers. So, you might be getting a lot of those folks, because that's where you get the digital thermometer.
And by the way, the mercury program is funded through grants that we receive from CMAS. They also help fund the, which doesn't show up on this cost.
The COVANTO is the one I was going to say, isn't it?
Yes. The cost for advertising, mail, all the mailers that we send out, and the, well, those two programs anyways, at this point.
COVANTO is, that's an example of a good private-public partnership.
Oh, fantastic. So, here's the problem. Those are the good news, and actually, the results, I should say, of what we did this year. Last year, I said fourteen towns participated, Yama did not. They didn't have it in their budget. Fortunately, this year, they are. Also, Dennis had to reduce their second collection to half of what it was because of budget problems. And we find out that this season, two thousand and ten, the town of Bonneville will not participate because of budget problems. And just, just so you know, there was a, something like five-hundred-and-thirty-seven people went to the Bonneville Collection last year.
Does this affect the shops' collection?
I don't, this is hazardous waste, not that shops are not hazardous waste, but that's administered differently.
Could you state again, how many people did this in the Bonneville last year?
Five-hundred-and-thirty-seven, I think I was told.
Five-hundred-and-thirty-seven people. So, what will they do?
All right, so, they won't have a place to dump their hazardous materials.
They have to go to another town?
Well, they can't go to another town.
They can?
No, unless they, not all the towns are in the, like Galveston's, with the regional collections. Let's just say, of, if we go back to the hundred-and-thirty tons that were collected, if five percent of it was improperly disposed of, because people couldn't go to a collection, they said, "Oh, I'm sick of this being in the garage," and they improperly dump it. That would be, what, five percent of a hundred-and-thirty tons is what? Six-and-a-half tons? I mean, I'm, I'm being conservative, too, possibly.
You know, I'm conservative right away, is that a lot of that stuff before, before the collection program was being dumped on Mary Dunn Road and the accessway to our fire training academy.
That's right.
And we just went through spending a hell of a lot of money to clean up the water we're getting.
You're making my next point. My next point is that we spend, we're spending a lot of money looking at water quality things throughout the county. We're spending money on future waste treatment plants and so forth. Here's a program that, if it's not funded properly...
It's going to...
Could affect, I mean, it's worse than the nitrogen. If you hear about nitrogen phosphorus, this is compounds that are a lot worse than nitrogen phosphorus to the drinking water.
Right.
And for towns with the private wells, it could be devastating. So, here's our suggestion. Given the issues with the towns having problems, and now Bonneville, we have a regional collection here at the county complex. And anybody from Cape Cod that wants to bring their waste, they come here. We set it up for Saturday. We, using the Bonneville numbers of over five hundred coming, and I can expect that we'd have that many.
At least...
We budgeted somewhere, we expect it would cost around twenty-five thousand for one-day collection. And we would promote it that anybody from anywhere in Cape Cod, if you have things that you want to get rid of, you haven't been able to go to your own, or if your town is not having one, bring it to the county, we'll get rid of it for you, in the correct way.
May I ask?
So, this would just supplement it, yes.
Do you do anything, is there anything done as far as pharmaceuticals?
We're working on that one, but that's...
Another hazard going into the, you know, people dumping them down the toilet or in the sink?
Yes, Mike McGuire's, that's one of his projects this year.
Okay.
Looking for funds and so forth, but yes, that's one of the projects. He and a member of America member working on, in the office on that project as well.
Mike had told me that several of these pharmacies were supplying bags for collection of, you know, stuff that was supposed to, you know, that had run out of date or was no longer being used, and like CVS and Rite Aid and Walgreens were collecting that. Aren't they doing that?
There's only one that I know of, and that was through Yama. See, there's a legal issue getting, you have to have, I believe, the only ones, I don't have all the facts. Yeah, Mike does have the facts, but when you're dealing with old drugs, unwanted drugs, there's an issue here with, you have to have police, actually goes to, police, police are collecting it and disposing of it properly, so...
Okay, because there's a concern that was, you know, that's been expressed by, at least I know, the Silent Spring.
Silent Spring is bigger than...
Quiet.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, no, no, they've approached me on these issues as well.
So, that's, and right now, part of it is obviously education. You know, people dumping down the toilet, we don't want them doing that. We'd rather they go in the rubbish, so they get incinerated. So, part of this is education, that's what Mike's working on. Obviously, collecting old stuff, working with medical groups that have direct access to old products. But, so that's, that's an initiative. That's above and beyond what I'm asking for here. Twenty-five thousand dollars to do a regional collection here on the complex, the county complex, once. And my hunch is, and I know it's a slippery slope, if you start funding things that the towns can't afford to do, but my hunch is that this is a high priority in the towns, and as Yama did, they didn't have it for one year, they're back in the business this year. My hunch is that Yama, I mean, Bonneville will be doing it again in the future, when and if the budget problems are straightened up.
I guess my first concern when I hear this is that, since this is such a great contribution to, you know, to the pollution of our water, that if we don't do it, that, you know, we will face, you know, we will face the prospect of, let's say, of what I call random dumping of hazardous materials.
No, no question. Yep.
And we, at least we have to make an effort to show that we're trying to, you know, keep up with it.
If we have a collection, and we don't budget enough for it, we could be faced with turning people away, and we, I can't guarantee that we won't turn people away, because there's only so many people you can take with a, with twenty-five thousand dollars, but...
So, if that really pays for, like, the disposal cost?[1784.33]
Yes, we have a company, we, every year the county goes out to bid, we hire a company that goes to all the nineteen collections. Mike works closely with them and the town officials.
Who are you using?
Oh, they're out of Providence this year.
Sam?
Jimmy?
Sam, Sam Johnson.
Off the top of my head, I can't remember the name, but they're out of Providence.
I remember when I was doing the nuclear waste stuff, there was a company up in the South Shore, used to do a lot of collection.
We've had a couple of different companies over the years, goes out to bid. But they would come here, set up here, they bring all their...
Yeah, they bring 55-gallon drums.
And all the people that specialize in this so they know what to do with it. And Mike is there with his crew, interviewing people and separating the materials and so...
Bill, when some, the towns that have these collections, when they go there, like particularly Sarah in the Upper Cape, where they have the regional one, Falmouth can go to Mashpee or whoever has, having it at that time. Does the individual have to show a license or car registration if they're from out of town?
I think they have sticker.
Oh, they're...
If you're from, if you're from Falmouth, and you are, and you're going to Sandwich, your Falmouth label sticker gets you into the regional collection.
Oh, okay. Now, if Barnstable's not doing it, and, and you, if you're in one of the towns, you don't pay because your town pays to have it. So if, um, let's say Yarmouth had one or another town, and Barnstable doesn't, could a Barnstable resident pay to take it there? Would the other town be willing to accept money for that residence?
At this point, no.
No?
That's right. You cannot go to another town's.
There's no mechanism.
Well, you'd have to have a credit card.
Credit card and, uh, and it...
Couldn't take cash.
And then based on how much, you know, three gallons of oil pay versus two bottles of pesticide versus...
Or just a $20 interest fee or whatever or something.
Right. I know, I think Falmouth is, is exploring that in the future.
Well, they're, they're doing it now at the, at the waste facility for trash, only $2.50 a bag for people who don't put it out at the curb.
Well, actually, if you came to the hardware, you give them a, you can dump there from any place as long as you give them a check. In other words, you, you have a...
That's rubbish, not hazardous materials.
That's rubbish, yeah.
They wouldn't have anything.
They wouldn't, once you pay that check and you're into, you know, you're in the, in the land, in the gate, okay, when you go around to the, you know, to the transfer station itself, when you leave the transfer station, you then go down to the recycling area. And typically, it's in the recycling area where hazardous material is collected.
Right.
Okay?
So there might be a way around it, but it's not...
It's too complex at this moment.
Yeah.
And how much would it cost Barnstable to hold their own? What are the towns?
Roughly 25,000.
25,000.
Uh, we, as a county, we, being a county, pay the setup fees for each of the towns at $800 each for each of the collections. Mike's there helping them. We have a couple contractors, people that work at those with Mike. So we provide labor and we coordinate it, we advertise it for them, we go out to bid for the whole county, excuse me. He communicates, he meets with the company that's doing the collection, prior to the collection, he goes to the slip, sets it up, makes sure the traffic pattern is correct. So he does all the coordination, facilitating of it.
That's a lot of...
Excuse me?
That's a lot of work.
Oh, it sure is. When there's nineteen of them, it's every Saturday practically all season, starting from...
But it's a lot of work in the county to get it all set up.
Absolutely.
Well, that's unfortunate if Barnstable can't do that.
So, that's the third in the line of...
Do you not have one coming back to help you?
Oh. And last, but certainly not least, the Lyme Disease Education Surveillance and Intervention Program. As you heard at the advisory meeting we had recently, there's still a lot of need for more Lyme education, surveillance, and intervention projects. The state, through our earmark, through the Mass Public Health, has cut that earmark so we don't have the funding anymore. And basically, the request here for $30,000 is to continue the program at some level, not the level we used to, because we used to get $90,000. But we, with the ninety, we worked both islands and the Cape. We would certainly, if the county were to pay this, I'd have to reevaluate whether we go to Nantucket and the Vineyard unless they have some funding. But this would be Cape Cod work.
Right. You know, we all have dogs here, and, you know, this is like, they're tick magnets.
Mm-hmm. Well, the incidence of Lyme is up again this year. I think you, you all heard, the presentations from the docs and our other members of our Lyme committee.
We're trying to resuscitate that too, aren't we? I mean, re-energize our Lyme Disease Committee?
Oh, yeah. And Mark has the, again, the request to bring to the state. What I'm told by people I work with is they're unlikely to have earmarks in this fiscal year, but...
So what are they gonna tell people that get Lyme disease?
Uh, I don't know.
See you later?
See you, Dr. John.
See you, Dr. I guess, yeah. So...
Now, I would say, we still have Dave Simser in the budget.
Absolutely.
There's the budding Dave.
Yes, yes.
He's your Lyme guy?
Yes.
Yeah, I met him, okay.
Dave's, Dave's funded in the budget. This helps pay for the intervention program, the deer stations, the education program, and so forth, so...
Well, you have a remarkable budget. Twenty-six regional programs, twelve environmentally oriented programs, eighteen public education programs, and four internal, you know, organization programs. I think it's, I think you've set a big task for yourself for the year. And, and I know through the time that I've been looking at your budgets, it's not unusual at all.
Thanks.
The cooperative extension does a lot of work for this town.
We have, we're in a lot of different areas, you know, from youth development to nutrition and food safety, to hazardous materials, agriculture, horticulture, marine science. We're working with a lot of different people. So, anyways.
So what do you, what do you think is gonna be your biggest challenge this year? I mean, even if you have all the funding still in order to achieve your goals in, in these various programs?
Biggest challenge?
Yeah.
Um, now, assuming we got all the new initiatives funded, just, I guess it's hard to say what the biggest challenge is going to be.
They're all a challenge.
Yeah, they are.
One of the things that's...
Yeah, all right, we haven't even covered that one yet.
One of the things that's hanging over our heads here is the one regional programs, Wildlife Protection Program.
Wildfire?
Wildlife Protection Program. And that, that's something that is waiting to happen.
Yep.
And, and with all, with all of the land going, it's been put in conservation and stuff that's being added, the fact that additional management plans are not part of the funding for the CPA allocations, you know, make it clear that if we didn't continue to pursue this, we are facing a very definite situation of real danger to the life and property here in the Cape.
We have, on the wildfire project, we have 12 towns now with plans. Ten of them have been implemented to some degree or another. The funds come not only from the county, through your, my request to you and your approval, but also we receive USDA forest fire funds, who have been fortunate. Last year we got $40,000, this year we have $30,000, excuse me, to supplement the county's money. Tomorrow night, we're in Chatham presenting a plan. So we're, those have been going very well. The land management funds that we've had were cut to 17 last year from 25. I have requested it to increase it to 20 this year. This, you signed the contracts, but just to refresh your memories, this year we funded three community gardens, P-Town, Wealthley, and Eastham. All three towns, I mean, this was, 17,000 went to, I think it's six different projects in six towns. So small money, but it makes a big difference. These are towns that wanted a community garden, that didn't have one. This seed money gave them the matching monies that they needed to go forward. Falmouth's putting in a handicap access trails through one of their conservation lands. Barnstable's putting in a project over at Craigville. Uh, gosh, I've forgotten the others, but it's, it's gone a long way. We've been in some of them.
One of the things that impressed me the most is the one you had for kids. You know, they had, each kid had a project. Is that in Barnstable or Mashpee?
Well, that's in Barnstable. That, yes, that was a different project. That's for the master gardener program. But the children have, we have two children's gardens, one in the Mills and one in the Brewster.
Well, I was very impressed with the fact that the kids are all learning of, you know, the process of growing and...
The tour.
Yes.
Yeah. Anyway, you were gonna talk about...
I had just a question on the regional, so in your budget per se, is the normal money you would use for these other regional collections? You still have that money in there?
Yes, actually, at one time, back in a couple of years ago, we had $50,000. And last year, the year before, it's been a little over $34,000.
Yeah.
So we do have 34 in there for the regional program, regional hazardous waste collections. This would be above and beyond that.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
The program that you're running out of your department, which I, I don't think people would connect with your department, does the program have the military kids? Are you supporting the, you know, backpacks?
Operation Military Kids has been very successful.
Have we got all the kids that are, you know, that are part of military families?
I'm not sure if we got them all, but we made a big difference last year.
Yeah.
Not only through clubs at the base. These are for children who are families of deployed, of deployed parents, with deployed parents. So we have clubs, we have after-school and vacation-type activities specialized for them. The funding goes directly for programs for these children. As well as last summer, we got a grant that helped pay for children to go to camp. So, we've been very successful. And I don't know if we reached them all, but we've, we've been attempting it.
I have one question for H. Nationally, 4H, in addition to supporting the stuff for, you know, for, for kids, in, you know, that are oriented towards agriculture, I was told that 4H picked up the junior achievement program in some areas. Is that anything that, and I, it used to be a couple of high schools on Cape Cod did have a junior achievement as an extracurricular activity. It's a relatively, you know, low, you know, low overhead type of thing. And I was wondering if some of the kids that we've given the babysitting training to wouldn't benefit from learning a little bit about the process of setting up businesses, which is what junior achievement does, since it is part of a 4H program. In the 4H information that you get from U.S., do they ever speak about anything other than agricultural 4H programs?
Oh, actually, 4H is a lot more than agriculture, particularly here on the Cape. But, um, we have programs that are similar to junior achievement. For example, every year we have a big public speaking program. It's called Visual Presentation Day. And last year we had close to 100 members who came and presented. Several of them went to state competition. As a matter of fact, Scott Brown's wife was recognized at a statewide event because she, a 4H event, because she said she learned her public speaking skills through 4H. So, her credit. So, we have, we have those types of programs, we have resume type, resume writing programs, interviewing workshops for the kids. So we have a variety of items that are in 4H. Probably saw in the paper, recent, recently there was a big story about a club down in Orleans at the Orleans Inn with high school-aged children, kids who are working with the owner of the Orleans Inn on hospitality and cooking and so forth. So, yes, we have programs that are reaching children through a lot of means, not just agriculture, but certainly agriculture has been the, was the beginning of it, and it still remains a big part of it.
I guess because of, you know, continuing interest I have in seeing whether or not we can provide some opportunity for kids, you know, to stay on the Cape after they get educated. We certainly get a lot from the chambers of commerce about what are we doing to provide jobs and so forth, that if we somehow were to encourage kids at an early age to understand what it takes to, let's say, to get investors and set up a business and, and understand what, you know, some of the risks that are involved in it, that we might point kids in a direction that they would find the kinds of jobs that will help them stay here instead of having to go off for 10 years and then come back and then, you know, and then find their way back, and then find their way back here, which we're trying to do now. We're trying to recruit people to come back and stay. But if we could find a way that would make it, make sense to keep them here. In other words, if it goes through high school, college, and have this in the back, in the back of their mind that they could set up a business, and, and they were sort of in the habit of doing that, that that might, might be a way that, that 4H, that, you know, that the cooperative extension through the 4H and through that kind of a program might be useful. It's just a thought.
Yes. We have a technology, we have technology clubs where the kids are involved in computer, if it loves the computer work, a program on filming and like a TV-type program, which is kind of successful, so...
I know, but that, yeah.
So, there are a lot of different directions.
Yeah, we should, we should look at your budget. Does anybody have any comments related to the budget itself?
I wish we could give more. I wish we could give more money.
I know. Well, now, these, the money for these programs that you mentioned here, your initiatives, they are in the budget?
Right. On the other hand, when I presented, Mark, have you added...
I added them in, yeah.
Mark added them in, okay.
Okay.
That's why it's $90,000. But you know, when you think about it though, Bill...
But that's the things they have.
These are all regional programs.
Yeah.
That have a huge benefit to the people on the Cape.
That's what I was trying to say when you...
26 regional...
Let me get a copy.
Yeah, I'll send it to you, yeah.
So...
Regional, environmental, economic development.
Yeah.
So they hit a lot of the initiatives that you've proposed in the, in your long range plan.
Absolutely.
I think it's, I think it's arguably correct that the visible face of what county, regional government does is represented in your department. They see more of your people and the people that have benefited from the kind of training that, than any, than practically any, anything else that we do. You hear about the Cape Cod Commission in a reactive way, but what you do is in a, in a contributory way to the quality of life here, and certainly the best example of our, of our stated mission of try to enhance the quality of life in the...
Well, you know, can I just say one thing? Maybe we need to change the name from Cape Cod Extension Services to Barnstable County Regional Services or something like that.
Professor Kenny, what?
Or Educational Regional Services.
Well, they're regional services and of a variety of, and people say, "Well, what do you really do regionally?" Well, these are all regional services. They, they affect every town on the Cape.
What doesn't show up in the budget is, in the, part of the cooperative part of our name, is we're cooperating with UMass Amherst.
Right.
So part of our funds for staff, part of my salary comes from UMass, and as well as Woods Hole Oceanographic Sea Grant, we receive 139,000 from them, which is part of the salary of our marine staff. So, with the exception of one member of the staff, the, three of the marine staff, half of their pay salary comes from Woods Hole Sea Grant. So it's a cooperative effort.
It is cooperative, yeah. You can't forget that.
Nothing prevents us from creating a division of the cooperative extension that does precisely what you said.
Every one of the divisions does regional programs. I mean, that's what we do. We're out there from one town to the next, so...
Well, I just think, a lot of people don't know what extension means. And, you know, when you read it, we understand it, but so that the public really understands it. It's something to think about.
It's an extension of the university. It's, it's, we're part of a nationwide system.
That's right.
Every state in the United States has the same title, depending upon what county they're in, so...
Maybe we call a cooperative extension a regional services. Get the word regional in there. Anyway, that's just, we, we need to move on.
Okay.
Then, how about your capital plan here?
Okay, capital plan, as you can see, I...
I can see you've deferred...
Yes.
You've deferred to twenty-twelve?
Yes. I, hearing the message that we got when the, we got the budget packets, it was, I just assumed that we would be deferred anyway, so I just chose to do it that way. Our extension vehicle, I have mentioned, is a Blazer. It's, it's five years old. We maintain it well, so, but it's five years old, and it gets this, oh, about nine people that share it, so.
How many miles does it have on?
Right now, sixty-something thousand, which is not a lot of miles.
But it's all off-road miles, isn't it?
It is. A lot of it is. I'll jump down to the, one of the pickup trucks is, the pickup truck here I have is a two thousand, so it's ten years old this year, again, well-maintained, but it gets a lot of work, a lot of, you know, hard work type miles on it.
Did you get that new or did you get that as a hand-me-down?
We have another pickup that was a hand-me-down from the sheriff's department several years ago. That one is, gosh, at least a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Not quite Scott Brown's mileage, but it's up there.
Two hundred and one thousand.
Is that right? But we have a lot of miles on that one, and that was, I think, a hand-me-down from the sheriff's department. And we just try to keep maintaining the vehicles we have, but there's only so many years we can do that. I can tell you now that next year I'll be back looking for some capital items. The boat we have was bought used. It goes to every town. It's, it was bought used and it's, that was at least.
You're talking about getting, you know, these seized vehicles, you know, the seized boats and trucks for, as part of the, you know, the drug programs. Are there any chance of getting some vehicles out of that?
If you know of a contact, I'll certainly pursue it.
Wayne actually is pretty good up on those. Yeah, you should ask Wayne. He's usually, I have a curve on those.
All right, if they're, are they workboats or are they?
Cigarette boats.
Cigarette boats. I think they're fast. They build for speed to my, at least they were.
They don't have to run that fast.
They don't really haul. They don't have a haul shell to cage.
I'm thinking more of the automobiles, you know, because, you know, you might be able to use an SUV instead of a, you know, instead of a pickup truck.
They are available. Wayne is up on it. I will tell you, the good, the better that it is, the harder it is to get, obviously, yeah. Somebody's already spoken for it. We're way down the pecking order.
But we could get on the list, you know.
Well, Wayne actually has come up with a bunch of stuff, so he's actually pretty good. So if you do, if you're interested, you should talk to him. Okay, then, actually, it's the next one I'm interested in, as the Coastal Explorer, obviously, we've, as you said, it's ninety-eight, it's been around for a long time. It's in good shape.
The Coastal Explorer, the hundred thousand dollar item there, is in great shape, even though it's purchased in nineteen ninety-eight.
Would you do that again, I guess, is the question? If it was falling apart and you had to do something, would you do it?
Yeah, could you tell us what that is?
Okay, you haven't seen it, all right.
Yeah, they have.
We were on the tour last year. It's a thirty-two foot RV.
Oh, that, oh, yes, okay, yeah.
Yes, Marine Museum.
Coastal Explorer, I kept thinking of a boat.
I was thinking of a boat too.
Oh, okay.
How come we have another boat?
The good news is, back in the day, when we purchased it, I had such a hard time getting that vehicle that then county commissioners, and Phil, you might have been there, I'm not sure. I asked if you, if I could set up a special account. And the money we collect, we put into that account, so somewhere around eighty thousand dollars is in this account. So hopefully, when we go to replace it, if that's the decision we all want to make, we'll be able to pay cash for it, or at least a good chunk of it.
So you would do that, Jeff?
I think I would, yes. It's, six, seven thousand children a year are involved. That's just through the schools, the summer. There's several thousand. It's extremely popular. Marine education is certainly used for Cape Cod, so. Every, I can't say every town, just about every town in the Cape is involved every year, if not every year at some point there.
When does that go back on the road again?
Late March.
I have a question with these copiers. How come the cost of a color and black on the copier is the same?
Must be the size. I was just, I just ran the numbers by.
Yeah, because we just got these two out here, the two Xerox.
The other thing is, that's a low number for an outboard, outboard motor.
We don't have a huge one. Again, it's a workboat.
Is it less than fifty horse?
Off the top of my head, I care a little bit.
If it's under that, that'd probably be right, but if you go above that, you know, you're talking about twice that number. And both kind of.
It's an outboard two, four-stroke.
Oh, four-stroke?
That'd be a four-stroke.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Well, and the five thousand for the boat.
We got a used skiff, oh.
Those you can buy, yeah, those you can buy.
And if we, it was used when we bought it, and we've had it for at least eight years.
I know that I gave, I gave the skiff that I had to, you know, to the Harwich Harbor Master because it was like a sixteen and seventy-foot boat, you know, it was going in the marine. Is that what this is?
It's not a Boston whale, but it looks similar to one. I'm trying to think of the name of it.
Carolina.
Carolina skiff, that's it.
Any other questions for Bill? Very nice. Thank you very much, Bill. Great job you did. Really appreciate it. All right, so we're going to take just a short recess while we wait for a human source.